38.
What?
I had like 38 fish.
Oh.
But we're in it. I'm gonna tell them like.
Is there no VLS update?
Those.
That I told.
I don't know. It's not like you could just say.
Dan Frazier?
It's okay, what do you want to do?
That's. Not like.
Anything I need to know?
No.
Reports and announcements. Yeah, apparently.
Okay.
I have anything to report.
He sent that email at last second.
Oh.
Chair Board of Supervisors report out. There's a typo, it's massive.
See, I just have to.
Didn't see it till.
Okay.
Yesterday.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Part of the template. Well.
I have no. Unless you want to know how many.
Tickets for our own, whatever you want.
Actually.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, we're going to get started if everyone take a seat, please. If you'll join me, we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to the August 20th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Trinity County. We have a full agenda today and a couple of presentations to get us started. The first is a presentation from Child Support Services where we will look to adopt a proclamation of appreciation which recognizes Trinity County child support for their commitment to the families of Trinity County and to recognize Child Support Awareness Month of August 2024 countywide. Does someone want to present before I read or just go on and read?
Has Bennett online by chance, anybody?
Bennett is actually in Humboldt County.
Okay.
I will read the proclamation. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity in recognition of Child Support Awareness Month of August 2024. Whereas August is Child Support Awareness Month, an annual time to raise awareness about a critical income support program that helps millions of children and families. And whereas in fiscal year 2023, child support programs nationwide collected $29.6 billion and served one in five children in the United States. And whereas in fiscal year 23, our local child support program distributed $10,000,016,901 directly to families in Humboldt and Trinity Counties. And whereas in fiscal year 2023, our local child support program increased the number of cases with support orders for families by 1.8%. And whereas child support is recognized nationwide as one of the most cost-effective programs, collecting over $4 for every $1 spent. And whereas our local child support program has provided engagement, education, and crucial financial support to our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizes August 2024 as Child Support Awareness Month countywide and commends the team of North Coast Regional Child Support for their commitment to serving the families in our community. Duly passed and adopted this 20th day of August 2024 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Costa, I am the Assistant Director for the Child Support Department in Humboldt and Trinity Counties. And thank you Chair Lutweiler, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the recognition of the child support program and to our department. I want to acknowledge our staff today and thank them for their hard work and dedication to the families that we serve. At child support, we are currently in the process of hiring more employees here at our local office. Some of you may know Devon Adrian, who has been a welcome addition to our, to our team. And we will soon have an experienced case manager from our Humboldt office moving out to this area, and she is also a MONG interpreter, so we're excited to offer that service. We continue to increase our outreach to the community and educate families that we serve and provide, provide the services that we do. In fact, Devon and I are going to be at the farmer's market tomorrow with the booth set up handing out stickers and treats to the kids if anybody wants to come by and say hello. In November, we will be participating in a MONG New Year celebration in Hayfork, and we look forward to participating in more events as our local office continues to grow. We are proud to serve the families here in Trinity County and on behalf of our entire team, thank you again for the recognition. Thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you. We have.
I'll move to approve.
We have motion.
I'll second.
Supervisor Gogin?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier? Chairman Lutweiler?
Aye. Thank you. All right, let's go present. Hold on, what happened?
Charles?
Yeah.
I'm done.
Yeah. Looks bad.
Hey. Our second presentation under Clerk of the Board received a presentation from Carl Stock, Regional Director, California Great Basin Bureau of Reclamation on Trinity County Items of Interest Regarding the Trinity River Division of the Central Valley Project.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for inviting me here.
Thanks for being here.
So I'm Carl Stock, Regional Director for California Great Basin Region of Reclamation in Sacramento. Been in the position since January and really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about the, some of the questions that, that you shared. So I'll start with the reconsultation on the Trinity River Division. Question was raised about the timing of that relative to the reconsultation on the long-term operations of CBP and, you know, noted that those are on a slightly different schedule track. So the, the consultation on the Trinity River Division, we're really trying to partner closely with the affected entities on the Trinity. And so we've got the Euro tribe and the Hoopa tribe as co-leads on that effort. And that has just necessitated a slightly different schedule than the LTO for the CBP. So on the, 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 the sort of Sacramento portion of the CBP, we're operating under a, a temporary interim operating plan, and that expires in December. And so that's, that's been the case for two or three years, and we'd really like to get on a little bit more sure footing. And so we're, we are optimistic that we can complete that consultation for the Sacramento portion by the end of this year before a court-appointed deadline of December 20th for when the interim operating plan would expire and we'd have to develop a new one. So rather than develop a new one, we've pressed ahead with completing that for the Sacramento, even as we're planning to complete that on the Trinity mid to late next year of 2025. So obviously that does raise some questions about, you know, how are we going to reconcile those two? And the way we've approached that is that the Sacramento portion of the CBP Long-Term Operating Plan, the consultation for that assumes the status quo on Trinity. So the 2000 EIS and ROD, that, that is the assumption on the consultation for the Sacramento. Obviously, we don't think, we think that, you know, the reason we're reconsulting, we think that there, we will likely see some changes to the Trinity. And if those are significant enough to have a threshold level impact on the operations of the Sacramento, then we'll obviously supplement the work that we've done on the Sacramento portion of that. So that doesn't, what we're doing on the Sacramento doesn't constrain in any way the effort that we're taking on the Trinity. We're, we're going to work with the partners on the Trinity to continue developing that proposed action and consultation and doing the associated NEPA compliance on it. And if, if the result of that necessitates a change or a supplement to the Sacramento portion, then we'll subsequently do that on the Sacramento portion. So I think we asked, we, you had asked also about the, some conversations with our area manager, Donnie Bader, about how and when to come up with mechanics to bank water in Trinity Lake. And I think what, what we're talking about here is essentially minimum pool and the level at which to keep minimum pool. I think there's a recognition that we've had that minimum pool too low, and our expectation is that we'll probably have a higher minimum pool requirement in the, in the current proposed action that we're working on. What we've found with our, you know, the, the, the modeling for, the hydrologic modeling that we're using to support this continues to evolve. And, you know, we've seen some pretty critically dry years in, in the very recent history. And so those are now catching up into the models. And so the, the, our latest calcim modeling are showing that in critically dry years, the minimum pool that we're after in Trinity Reservoir and the downstream flows cannot simultaneously be met in some of the most critically dry years. And so you're going to have to make some hard decisions about what does that mean? How do we allocate that? Even under a zero diversion scenario, both cannot be met in the most critically dry years. So my understanding is that we have a request into the county seeking your input on what do you, how do you think we should address that when we get to a place of a critically dry year where even with zero diversions, we've got to make some choices between minimum pool and downstream flow? That's the kind of input we're seeking from all the partners, but I understand we have a specific request, so I look forward to hearing your thoughts and feedback on that as we try and balance what's a, obviously in a critically dry year, a tough, a tough call to make. A little bit on Trinity infrastructure improvement efforts. I'm really excited here to report a lot of what we've got going on. We, in, in my previous role with the Bureau of Reclamation, I helped to set up the program for infrastructure, aging infrastructure funding under the President's bipartisan infrastructure law and, and got approval for an award of $65 million for an upgrade of the Trinity Hatchery, long overdue, very much needed. And it's a really good project. We'll have a really world-class hatchery when we get that modernization completed. So we're really excited about that, really happy about it. It's one of Donnie's top priorities to get underway this year, and we do expect to be able to award a contract for it by the end of the year. So excited to report on that. We're planning some major maintenance on the Clear Creek Tunnel this winter, some lining repairs, and we've awarded a contract for that that will complicate diversion, so we'll have to kind of work, work around that, but we, we've got a plan for that. We're doing some runner replacements at the Spring, Spring Creek Powerhouse, and we've staged that so that we're doing one unit at a time so that we can keep the plant operating, albeit at half, half capacity. But we feel like we're on schedule to get that completed, and, and once that's done, we'll have significantly increased our generation capacity there. Over the next couple of years, we've got transformer replacements planned at Trinity Car and Spring Pink, Spring Creek Power Plants. Again, funding from bipartisan infrastructure law has made that possible, and we're really excited that the, that the California Great Basin region is getting a lot of that funding and making that available to, across the region, but certainly here in the Trinity Division. Let's see. We've done some improvements to the auxiliary outlet works at Lewiston Dam, which will allow us to fine tune releases a little bit better. That was kind of a blunt instrument before, and, and we're looking forward to having a little bit more precise ability to control flows out of that. One of the things I also wanted to report on the Trinity Dam Temperature Control Device, we've, we've got temperature control devices on several of our reservoirs, and this is something we're taking the initiative to look into for Trinity. And that'll start with a preliminary, what we call a value planning study, where we get together a, a good group of technical experts familiar with the dam and with temperature control devices to really do some good brainstorming on what some of the alternatives and options might be. And so reclamation does that, you know, on, on our dime, kind of independently, and, and the, the outcome of it will give us an indication as to whether we think there's some viable alternatives that we might be able to investigate further. Then the next step is an appraisal study. We have independent authority to do an appraisal study, but at that point, we come looking for a cost share partner to share in the costs of, of an appraisal study, which usually those, those, those are not particularly expensive to do because they often rely on existing data, or we, we try and take information we have on comparable kinds of facilities and, and transfer that information. So those are relatively straightforward. And then from there, if we find coming out of that, that we think there's some alternatives that might be feasible, then we'd go to Congress and ask for authority to conduct a feasibility study. So that's where we're at on that. So question about management actions to improve cold water storage capacity at Trinity Lake, so the, you know, the, the temperature control device I just talked about and how we're looking into that is, is certainly one of those. And that study process can help us identify some other ways that we might achieve the objective. The objective isn't an actual piece of infrastructure, the objective is how do we figure out how to manage cold water better out of Trinity? And there may be multiple different kinds of options that we can look at in a study like that. As you're very well aware, that we're, we're the Trinity River Restoration Program. As you're very well aware, that we're, we're, the Trinity River Restoration Program Office here in River Ville is working on a winter flow variability proposal. It's really important to us to build a consensus proposal. And I really wanted to thank your team that, that have worked with us on the, the flow group to get a proposal that everybody can support. Really appreciate that effort, really hoping that we can take to the Trinity Management Council meeting in September, a proposal that will, that will pass the council. So really working with all of the parties to try and figure out how we make sure we've got a supportable approach. I'd really like to sign a decision memorandum authorizing those winter flows. As I think the science is pretty clear that that's what the fish need. And I think that we've found a way we can do it that, that everybody can be supportive of. So really just wanted to thank you all for your participation in that. My final question was about, I think the Whiskey Town Reservoir in Clear Creek. And, you know, what's our policy on using Trinity River watershed resources to accomplish the objectives of those facilities? And so, you know, I, 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 one thing I'd say is the Whiskey Town and Clear Creek are part of the authorization of the CVP. Congress authorized us to build those facilities to divert a certain amount of irrigation supply, you know, water for irrigation supply via Lewiston. But a couple of points I'd want to make is Whiskey Town is primarily managed for recreation. So that reservoir doesn't go up and down that far. We do draw it down a little bit in the winter. And in most years, average or better years, we can actually refill that from Clear Creek, from natural flows. It's in drier years, we do pull a little bit to, to fill, to refill that from Trinity. But primarily during the, during average years, that's filled from outside the Trinity. We work very closely with National Park Service for the management of, of that area and that resource. And have some coordinated operating agreements that we do together with them. We can certainly share some more detail if requested on the different lake elevations and what our targets are. But, but yeah, Whiskey Town really is primarily managed for recreation purposes with o- only in a handful of years draws from the Trinity. Let's see. I think that's, that's really a conclusion of what I had to share. But certainly open to take any questions and can either try and answer those myself or commit to get back to you.
Great, thank you very much. Board members?
I have a question. During the reconsultation with the Sacramento River, now that we kind of have a very good feeling that we will have a winter variable flow, which is a departure from the rod, a large departure from the rod, first time ever, I think, although we will stay inside rod volumes. Will just speed up anything for the Trinity Riverside, kind of knowing that we know what's coming?
Are, are, are you asking if we think that that agreement will allow us to complete the biological opinion sooner?
Yeah.
I, I don't think so. Our proposed action is on schedule to submit to, we think we're on schedule to submit a proposed action to the, the National Marine Fisheries Service for consideration. But a lot of the schedule in terms of developing the buyout relies on them. And so we are still targeting summer to fall of 2025 for completing that action. What, the, the reason we're pretty excited about what the flow work group has done is that we think we'll be able to implement something very comparable to what's being talked about for the long-term action this year. So that will take some of the pressure off of getting that, that buyout in place now. And I think you also bring up a really good point that one of the big changes that we anticipate is the timing of flows from Proviso One and redirecting those a little bit from the summer where it seems they're not only not necessarily needed as much, but actually may be undermining juvenile fry survivability to the winter. And that shift doesn't really make a significant difference on diversions to the Sacramento. And so that's why we're, we're, we think it's, it's very well possible that we may not have to go update the Sacramento portion of it. But again, we don't, we don't know exactly what the proposed action is going to be. That's still being discussed by all the participants. So more to come on that.
You just mentioned redirecting flows from summer. Could you explain that a little bit more, summer flows?
Yeah, so the 2000 Rod had set aside a portion of water for augmenting flows down the Trinity during the summer. And so that's what we had been doing for, since 2000. And the science that we have been looking at, and this is true of our tribal partners as well, are, are finding that, that results in water that's actually too cold for juvenile salmon survivability during the summer. And so the idea is that that would actually be more effective in the winter than in the summer. So then it gets to a question of like, well, what's the actual timing and actual volumes? And that's, I think, what the work groups are, and the participants are really hashing out at the moment.
Would you, right now, we have baseline flows of 450 during the summer. Would you expect them to go under that?
I, I don't want to say before the, the groups have had a chance to do their work. But I, I think I'd say I'm fairly confident that the consensus is that those need to be reduced beyond, below what they were in the 2000 Rod.
What do you think that reduction will be?
I, I, I can get back to you on that. I, I'd hesitate to put numbers to that while the work groups are still talking through that.
You talked a little bit about the minimum pool. Do you have a number in mind, 12, 15, somewhere in there?
I'll have to give you the same answer there. I do think higher, I'm fairly confident that we all recognize we need to set that minimum pool higher. I, I don't want to prejudge our work on that by, by, by putting out some numbers just yet. I can certainly have our team share with you some of the ranges that they're looking at and considering. But I'd hesitate to commit to any of those yet at this point.
What time do you predict, not just the administrative part, but the actual brick and mortar part of the hatchery to begin?
I think our plan is about a two-year construction period for the upgrade. And, and like I said, we're planning to, we're targeting a contract award later this year. So I would say end of, end of 26 is a rough estimate.
At the beginning?
End of 2026.
It'll all be done by then.
It's got a big project construction schedule, but as I've, as I've said, I've communicated to Donnie, this is one of our number one priorities in his area and he, he knows how to deliver these. So I'm relatively confident that we can stick to that two-year construction schedule.
So I guess one of the surprises I just got from your presentation was the reduction of summer flows. I don't think that, it's been tossed around, but now it seems like it's a, it's kind of a fact coming out. And, you know, I participate in this, CEO Tutt Hill does and Patrick does. And I don't think any of us have seen a graph on the baseline flow of 450 going below that. Any idea, any thoughts open my eyes, something like that?
Again, if I, if I could say it's going to be this, if I knew it's going to be this, you know, I'd be happy to share that. I think that's, that's premature, but I'm certainly happy to get back to the county with the, with our proposed action team, working teams, thoughts on where we are at on that. But what I'm speaking to is just the, the, one of the fundamental concepts that we're thinking about and why we are wanting to change the flow regime from what's in the 2000 Rod is, is this scientific consensus that the, the, the summer flows are leading to too cold of water temperatures for the, for the salmon during that period. So exactly how much we adjust that and what actions we take, that's still, that's still being worked on.
Are you talking about water temperature for adults or juveniles?
Juveniles.
So what do we do about the adults?
So you're probably, you're getting a little over my, you know, I'm an economist. You're getting a little over my head, but I'm happy to put you in contact with our Bay Delta office to have a little more discussion about that.
All right. And, you know, not that I'm against any of the winter variable flows that we're going to put out there, propose. But I am a little concerned now of the unknowiness of the, you know, 450 that we normally have just because of recreation fishing, you know, water temperature for adults, all those, all those things. So that surprises me that we haven't really spoken a whole lot about that.
And, and what I'd say is we very much invite your input and feedback on that. Now's the time. If there's any questions or suggestions you have on how to most effectively engage in providing your input to that now, please reach out to us and we'll get you connected with the, the, the feedback opportunities on that. Yes, go ahead.
This is just a kind of a broad question, if you will. As things change in the, in the, in the lower Klamath, and we know we share that, and you know, that, that entrance from the sea there. I'm just curious, and I'm sure you are, but just tracking that and those impacts that that may have on the fish coming in through those changing, very changing waters at the mouth of the Klamath and how that might impact the Trinity and then what role? What are, if, if there are any expectations of our water flows to help with, you know, I guess diminishing some of those lower flows at the mouth of the Klamath with the heavy sediment loads from the dam removal?
So in terms of sediment flushing flows for, as a result of dam removal, those, we're not considering using flows from the Trinity for that. Really, a lot of where the sediment issues are, are more pronounced above the confluence. And so wat- water for flushing flows is going to be coming from the, the Klamath and not, not the Trinity. However, we are cautiously optimistic that the effect of dam removal will be of benefit to the species we're concerned about that come up the Trinity as well. Because in that lower portion after the confluence, the, we, we anticipate higher survivability as a result of the dam removal. So, you know, what does that mean in the long term for the prospects for the salmon on the Trinity? We think, we think it's a net positive. But, but certainly we're not looking at any Trinity actions related to the dam removals.
Thank you for your time.
So are you saying, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just want to check with the others.
Sure.
I do, but I'm happy to wait.
So are you saying that there will probably be no Trinity River water used to control the temperature of the Klamath at the confluence and below?
So the, the, there's a little bit of a wrinkle to that. And that is that there's an entitlement that Humboldt County has to a certain amount of water supply. And we are going to meet that. If we can achieve some temperature objectives simultaneously with that obligation, then, you know, that's a, that's a great thing. But we're not planning any additional temperature releases to try and control temperature in the lower Klamath from the Trinity.
Why would that be? We do, we do it almost every year.
Again, the target is the Trinity.
Right, but I think that the Klamath is going to need some substantial help in their water clarity and temperature. And we already have pulse flows on the Trinity for the Klamath. So I'm not trying to depart from what's going on in the, in the Trinity. But with the dam removal sediment temperature objectives, I think that we will probably need to send more water down the Trinity than we have in the past, which has been a considerable amount.
Yeah, and, and what I'm, what I'm saying is there may be some of our independent actions we're taking on the Trinity that are, end up being beneficial in the lower Klamath. But the, that isn't the, that's not going to be the driving objective. The decisions on the Trinity are going to be, and what we, the timing of flows and releases from Lewiston are, are going to be in support of Trinity obligations. We're not planning on leveraging Trinity flows to achieve the objectives in the Klamath. Those are going to be done from the Klamath.
So in the past, why have we taken the Trinity water that I'm not?
Well, I, I guess I'm not. I, 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 I think that there's, we, we may be getting tripped up over the obligations that we have to, to provide flows to Humboldt County and the actions that, that the, the, the temperature objectives that that can simultaneously support. But my, my understanding is that when we've taken actions to support temperature issues in the lower Klamath, those have been in the context of existing obligations that we have on the Trinity, like the 50,000 acre feet flows to Humboldt County.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But that's been going on since that, I think that was signed in the 50s, right? The 50,000 acre feet? So I would consider that already being done. And then we have pulse flows in September, we'll say, when it gets really warm to not have a fish kill like we did in 2003. So in my mind, the 50,000 acre feet that Humboldt is getting is already kind of in the works. But there will be needed flows, more flows than, than that to cool and probably clarify. You know, as we've seen last year with the North work, with the Gilrod they got from sediment there, I'm almost thinking that they're going to want a little bit more water than usual to, to help those fish out. And those fish are Trinity fish before they get to the confluence. So I would just like to be kept informed on why, when you're going to do it. And, you know, the Humboldt 50,000, I'm not sure where that falls in right here because it's always kind of been around. So I don't want to add that in now as something new since it's already kind of been, been used, we'll say for, for quite a while.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I don't believe we have actively made a release to support that 50,000 acre feet, except for in some years when we did have concerns in the lower Klamath. And, and what we said was, Humboldt County is entitled to that. They are asking for that because the temperature control in the lower Klamath is important to them. And so we've used it for those purposes. I don't think I would characterize it as we already release that volume to them every year.
Supervisor Cox?
Thank you, morning. And thank you, Director Stock, for being here with us. Appreciate your presentation. And I also want to just say quickly before my question that I do appreciate that you're looking for a proposal that everyone could be in support of, that that is your goal. Thank you for that and that you're asking the board to weigh in. Appreciate that. And my question will be far easier to answer. This is more, more from my understanding. And you had mentioned that there's a runner replacement happening at Spring Creek Powerhouse and that it's going to increase the power generation there. So considering that one of the reasons to operate from a higher minimum pool, again, you're helping me with my understanding as I state what I think to be the case. One of those reasons is for efficiency of power generation. So my question is whether this increased capacity at Spring Creek is significant enough to have, to play a role in perhaps what you would feel that those minimum pools would need to stay at in order to keep power generation, what we would expect and need to see?
Yeah, great question. If I understand it, you're essentially asking, does the increased generation Uh, yeah, great question. If I understand it, you're essentially asking, does the increased generation efficiency that we'll see at Spring Creek, um, could that potentially translate to uh, a need for less uh, uh, water down um, the Clear Creek tunnels? And it certainly could. And that's, I think, something that we'll be uh, that we'll be looking at as we develop the proposed action. Um, you know, we're always looking for um, where we've got uh, uh, operational efficiencies that can uh, reduce the need for water diversions, um, and so um, uh, our commitment is to really watch for those and, and look at how we can do those. And I think that what's really pushing us to do this just broadly is um, in a, you know, climate change impacted environment, we're seeing uh, reductions in flow. So that's why every time we update um, the models we use, the hydrologic models we use, we find there's actually a little less river, uh, flow in the, in the rivers than we thought. And so we're all gonna have to figure out how we um, uh, make more efficient use of that. And this is one of the objectives, and, and so your question is a good one, and uh, certainly one that I think we'll be considering as we look at um, how high we can keep minimum pool uh, without uh, unduly affecting um, diversions to the Sacramento.
Nice, thank you.
Supervisor Fraser?
Got a couple of questions now. Do you plan on reducing any of the flows to the senior water contractors in the CVP?
So are you talking about specifically the Sacramento River Settlement Contractors, or?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we've nega- we're, we're um, finalizing an agreement with them uh, that would uh, uh, commit them to making uh, reductions during some of the most critically dry years in exchange for um, some compensation that's coming from the Inflation Reduction Act. And so um, so yeah, there's a uh, an agreement being worked out that would reduce uh, that during dry and critical years where it's uh, so difficult to manage the um, the, the balance across the CVP.
And that will be used for trendy lake storage, I guess? Is that, is that what?
Uh, no, that's, that's really aimed at um, uh, Shasta, maintaining um, minimum pool elevation higher in Shasta, is what that's for.
All right. Uh, we approved the winter variable flows, winter variable flows, will you issue a new assessment? Uh, environmental assessment, or just go over the, the same one that's been out there for a while, a few years now?
Um, I, I think our plan is to put out, uh, is to make some uh, minor modifications to that environmental assessment uh, to reflect this specific proposal. Um, and then once we've got um, uh, feedback from the Trendy Management Council, um, to then sign a, a Fonzie and then proceed with the action.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, you mentioned a couple of things. One was on the Fish Hatchery, a couple of year project. Is it safe to assume that the hatchery continues to operate during the project timeframe? It's not interrupted, it's just?
Correct.
Okay, and just when it's done, then it can work at its enhanced level?
Yep, and that's some of what contributes to the timeframes. We gotta do it piece by piece, component by component. Um, but yeah, we do uh, plan to continue operating.
Okay, thank you. And then uh, you mentioned uh, both that you're an economist and economic impact. So uh, how is economic impact within Trinity County being reflected in decisions being made and opinions being submitted?
Um, e- economic uh, uh, impacts are part of the um, uh, National Environmental Policy Act compliance. So um, when we do that, uh, the, the NEPA compliance for the completed um, Trinity uh, biological opinion, before we adopt that, we'll, we'll do uh, appropriate NEPA compliance for that, and that's the context in which those impacts will be um, analyzed and included uh, in the um, the NEPA compliance document.
Say NEPA comes back with significant loss of income to Trinity County, wh- where do we go then as a supervisor?
Well, so, um, what I'd say is uh, N- NEPA is a um, it's, it's a documentation of impacts, and then uh, there's a decision made by the uh, action agencies. So what the purpose of those documents are to inform the decision makers on what are the impacts. And so, you know, what, what I would say definitively is that if uh, that uh, we try to avoid um, uh, adverse impacts uh, to both the human and natural environment, um, that's one of the stated objectives of NEPA. And so that's how we try to build our proposals. Obviously, um, uh, the needs of uh, you know, different uh, areas that are affected are sometimes in conflict, and so we gotta weigh and balance those. Um, but uh, certainly impacts to uh, any portion uh, of the, the affected area uh, are gonna be really important to us, and certainly in Trinity County. So um, we'll do the analysis, we'll take that into consideration. We'll do our best to minimize or avoid those impacts, or ma- mitigate for them. Um, but you know, that's, that's part of the, that, that will be part of the process.
To.
Go ahead, Jill.
To part B of Supervisor Gogan's question, I believe I heard him ask, where would we go as supervisors if we disagreed with the outcome of that analysis and the decisions that get made?
So if, if the disagreement is with the, the data, like with the actual analysis itself, um, then we would ask for that uh, feedback on, you know, what did we miss? What did we uh, get uh, incorrect? So if we are, if you're seeing uh, greater impacts than what you see reflected in our draft uh, NEPA document, that's why we uh, invite uh, feedback on that, and we um, are required to consider that uh, feedback and address it, so. Um, so if, 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 if that's the question, that's the process for that. In terms of whether um, uh, you know, there's uh, disagreement with the final decision and action, you know, the, 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 the decision is going to be made by uh, reclamation to, as to whether to adopt it, but not until uh, we've had this robust kind of conversation about what are the, the relative impacts and how can we best uh, address and mitigate those.
So just to be clear here, there will be no new draft uh, EA for the winter variable flows?
So are you talking about this year, or are you talking about as incorporated into the long-term consultation?
Well, it's, it's gonna happen this year, I, I would imagine, so that would be a good place to go, and I think that just um, issuing a revised EA or Fonzie is not, misses a big departure from what we've been doing. Um, so I think a new EA would be good.
Uh, I think the reason that we're planning to just make revisions to the, so we never finalized that EA. If we're talking about the same one, we never finalized that EA, that was a preparation, that was an analysis that we did uh, on actually a um, uh, winter flow variation from the two thousand rod. That's why we felt we had, we needed to do an EA, and then um, we, we didn't carry that forward at the time. So that's why I say that our plan is to take the work that was done there and the analysis that was done uh, there, and uh, modify it to reflect what this year's proposal is, and then use that. So I guess you could say it's a new EA, it's just relying on a lot of the work that we did the last time we uh, did NEPA analysis on uh, winter flow variability proposal.
Okay.
So I would like to come back to the, my questions. Um, you mentioned r- that Whiskey Town Lake is, is managed for recreation in the summer. Um, there's a lot of people in Trinity County that say, what about managing for recreation here in the summer? And so help us understand the differences. Why is one prioritizing, one is not?
Um, I, I, I guess I wouldn't say that we would prioritize one over the other. Uh, my, the point I was making about Whiskey Town is it's not managed for water supply. It's, it's, there's a, a small variation in uh, Whiskey Town, and that for, and that's um, aimed at uh, uh, recreation and um, maintaining uh, adequate head pressure uh, for power generation. But there's not a uh, it's not specifically managed for water supply. So that's, that was the point I was making. I, I would not um, uh, I, 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 I wouldn't characterize um, our management of recreation um, or, or our, our attempt to achieve re- recreation objectives on Whiskey Town as being prioritized over those on Trinity. The, the diversions uh, from Trinity, um, you know, those are under authorized uh, program, but it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that uh, we, we emphasize recreation in one area over another.
Well, I'll, I'll challenge, not, not challenging you, I'm challenging policy, and I'm trying to just make it clear to everyone the way this works, because it, it is very clear that Whiskey Town is maintained at a certain level throughout the summer, and it's a great place to recreate. Trinity Lake is never, to my knowledge, been managed from a recreational standpoint. They deal with what they get up there. So I don't know how we say that they aren't different. I, I, I get that there's different rules in place, but that's what I'm trying to get from you. Help people understand why does one lake not get? I mean, literally, there is nothing I've ever heard that says recreation impact is considered in the decisions of what does, happens with that water. And very clearly, decisions are made that impact, and it keeps full for recreation purposes, Whiskey Town. So I'm trying to make sure we all understand, why is that?
Yeah, that very fair point um, that, that you make. There's a very big difference in terms of uh, how Whiskey Town gets managed for recreation versus how Trinity Reservoir uh, does. And what that comes back to is what the authorized operations were. So Trinity is uh, was planned and authorized uh, by Congress as a water supply uh, regulation. And so the lake levels at uh, Trinity are just going to fluctuate a lot more because that's the operational purpose of Trinity. And yes, that does impact uh, uh, recreation opportunities. Whereas Whiskey Town was not planned and designed as a water storage facility, so the operations are more amenable to uh, a focused recreation area.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then another thing that comes up often with folks, Ken, because you've been answering a lot of questions that are from these people who live and breathe this, along with you and your team. Um, there's a lot of people in the community that just say, the water's down, the water's gone, the water's too fast, the water's too low, the water's too warm, the, all those sorts of things. Um, one of the things that also comes up is that a lot of the water that is released from up here ends up down the valley and generating money for water companies. And here we sit about to make significant budget cuts and getting no money for the water that comes out of here. So again, I'm not saying, why are you doing that? I'm saying, help us understand the rules by which that is how the game is played.
Sure, uh, a very fair point as well. So, and it ties back to the same thing, that what Congress authorized the Trinity River Division to do. And that was, um, you know, it, it is what it is. Congress authorized the, the diversion of Trinity River water to the Sacramento. And um, and so uh, that's, that's how the project gets operated. What I will say is that it's, it's, I, I don't see any um, profits being made by the water companies that deliver the water. So, so I would take that to the, as, again, my economics would put me to, what's the end use? And, and what is the effect of that end use? The effect of that end use is uh, almonds, avocados, vegetables uh, grown in the Central Valley, uh, by which uh, California really provides a substantial portion of the whole country's food supply. And food security is a really big deal. Um, and uh, you know, for example, we, California grows eighty percent of the world's, the world's almond supply. And that, that creates a lot of, uh, generates a lot of economic uh, benefits to California, and I consume a lot of almonds. Um, I think a lot of us do. Um, but, but it's not just almonds, it's, you know, that's, it's that story on um, most of the fruit and nut crop uh, for the country. Uh, the ma- the majority of it comes from the Central Valley, and as a result of those diversions. And so yes, we understand that that comes at a cost elsewhere. Um, and that's something that hopefully Congress really considered in authorizing that uh, diversion. But it's something that, you know, to your point, we need to keep it, you know, front of mind, that this diversion uh, project, it does have impacts, and, and we should always be looking for ways where we can help mitigate those and uh, be responsive to that. But, but it is, I, I would say it, it, it does go to um, uh, a, a lot of uh, economic benefit across California that, that I think in some ways can come back to uh, other parts of California, but.
Sure, yeah. And I, uh, and I appreciate that, and I think it's uh, it's actually enlightening to me, because I, I may have just misunderstood what people were telling me, that the actual water companies were profiting, not just the, the people using the water. Um, but I completely understand the, the far inside of it, it's the in-between side that you're educating me about.
Yeah, and, and so um, you know, I have a lot of daily interactions with those water companies, so we're talking about uh, like um, in terms of the ones that operate some of our conveyance facilities, the Haemicalis Canal Authority, the San Luis Altamundota Water Authority, Friant Water Authority, these are all state uh, quasi-state agencies, and they, they are not allowed to turn a profit from any of their operations. Um, but those are our operators of the facilities and deliverers. Then you take it to uh, like Westland's Water District. Um, same thing, the reclamation law um, is very explicit about um, waters provided at cost. Uh, and uh, and, and that water cannot be resold for uh, a profit uh, so long as it's reclamation water. So for example, Weston's Water District, they may have other independent sources of water supply that maybe they can turn profits from, but as far as the CVP supply, that's expressly prohibited. And, and so they, they have one thing they can use that for, and they can apply it to lands that are producing agriculture.
Thank you, that's very helpful, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And I, I think I, you know, we, we um, at a, at a much smaller level, dealing with just a county um, versus what you're facing, are often trying to find these balances, and we're working within the rules that we have to work within. And so I appreciate that, and, and what I would just hope, a message that comes back through you and your team is, I think often we get to a point where the, the headbutting is primarily because uh, one part of the other isn't feeling heard. So there are people that say on the understanding of the water that needs to go down and feed the world and the country, and the, and support our economy, and all these other kinds of things um, are not looking at that when they're just saying, but I, I can't operate my business up here anymore, nobody's come stay at my KOA. Uh, I, I bought a, a boat and paid money for a dock and I can't use it, and you know, so those pieces don't get heard. And then when we talk about river flows for restoration, and especially with the winter variable flows, and we had this of, yes, we need to do it, it's better for the fish, and then all of a sudden, we had people coming out of the woodwork saying the economic impact to us was huge, in a, in a small and poor county, huge. And so I think the more that we can make sure both parties are truly being heard and are being, feel like they're being heard, so that the economic impact of those decisions are clearly represented, are considered. And again, I know that you still have to face um, decisions about conflicting interests. But I, I just encourage you, the better that we can communicate about that, make sure that we truly are listening and people feel heard, I think we'll make a lot more progress.
I appreciate that, and I, I want you to know, I really take that to heart. Uh, uh, our, our best decisions are ones that really have considered all the impacts. And, and uh, and the only way we can really accurately analyze and assess those is, is talking to the people that do get impacted, and so that's our commitment, um, and please hold us to that, uh, me, me and my team.
Thank you.
Couple of questions at the very end here. Sorry to keep you here too long.
That's.
Am I understanding this right? There will be a new draft DA with public comment coming up?
Uh, for the winter flow variability?
Yes.
Um, that's a good question. Let me get back to you on what our schedule is. Uh, you know, uh, these, these do have a public comment aspect to it, and we'll, we'll respect that. I think um, we're, we're uh, trying to figure out how we fit that into a timeline that is uh, workable for actually doing the winter flows uh, this year, but um, that definitely would be our intention.
And since the Westland's permanent contract was not validated, um, does BOR consider it a invalid? And Trinity County was part of that lawsuit there?
Yeah, that's a matter under litigation that I can't speak to, so.
Good enough.
All right, and you didn't even need county council to tell you to say that, huh? She's usually the one, she knows. Thank you so much for coming, and I appreciate that you took such a hard look at our questions and prepared for answers, and then responded to so many others, and I really appreciate your time, and I know from talking to some of the folks on your team down here, they were very excited that you were coming as well, so we're really happy you're here.
Thank you, I appreciate the invite and would love to do it again.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take a five-minute break.
Over.
Mike.
Thank you.
He was explaining to all of the people, he was giving that to 2017.
Yeah.
And so that's why he wasn't thinking about what you were thinking. So he clarified with him.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, I know he's, you know, he doesn't have all the nuances.
Okay, thank you all for your time here and we are back just a minute or so late. We are going to move into public comment. We'll get that door closed so we can. Thank you, Ashley. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. And if you'll bear with me, we'll make arrangements for this gentleman to speak first and then we'll move on. So please come forward. Ryan, can you help with that? Oh, you got it. Okay, great, thank you.
My name is Kit Andrewsen. I've been in town for a while, over 20 years. And I am very upset that you're going to close the library. There are alternatives, just closing it. When I first came here, the hours of the library were three days a week. They're now five days a week, which is nice, much better, but if you're running out of money, that's something to think about. And also, God relates that, why don't you get more business in town so the town has more money? I mean, the planning commission took their time, we lost the grocery store because they took their time. They also drove another business we had, Lewiston, out of town entirely because he wanted to expand his business. It was a manager named Beckering Business. He wanted to expand, they wouldn't let. That means the job already, and Lewiston left, plus the jobs that he was going to create. So that, those kinds of things have put us in a situation that we are in now. And it, excuse my language, pisses me off. Because it's our future, you're burning in debris. All these kids are our future. So please don't do that. I thank you. I'll talk later.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. We will now take others for public comment.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chair Lou Weiler, Jennifer Hill, Douglas City. This library is a huge resource for me and my family. Every mother I know here uses the library. We're deeply concerned. We're worried about the health of this county. This is a huge resource for us. I'm part of this big moms group and we get together, we already have limited resources. So this would take away like this one hub that we have. Not trying to make your job harder, not trying to criticize you, I know your job is hard. I just want to let you know, if you want new families for this area, this is so important. If you're worried about the growth of this community, especially young families, please know this is not an outdated resource. We check out books, we go to Storytime, Ms. Casey, the kids adore. She even has a craft ready for them after Storytime. Now there's a separate baby Storytime for the younger kids. It's a place where the kids enjoy interacting with others they meet. I especially frequent the library in the winter, when it's raining or snowing and hard to move around, it's a really good place for an indoor activity. It's already hard enough to live out here. Yep, to lose these vital community hubs would inhibit more young families from moving here. There's a reason why libraries have been open since the beginning of time. Let's focus on managing our resources better. That's what we want, that's what everyone wants. If you have to shut it down, please focus on reopening it as soon as possible. Thank you for your time, for your consideration, and respectfully, thank you all for your service to our county. And Wayland would also like to comment. Do you want me to say it first or you're gonna say it?
I love the library. I really like running to read. Please keep the library open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, Board of Supervisors, my name is Andrea, I am from Lewiston. And this is Stevie and my son Frey. We moved here a year ago from San Francisco and we had no connections here. We just visited and we fell in love with this community. It was very obvious that this was a wonderful place to raise a family. And so we uprooted our lives and we moved here. And we have since fallen in love with the community. Here at the library, we have, I have met other moms. This has been the major source of my new connections, friendships, same for my children. And it is very concerning to me that this could, that our library could actually close its doors. I think that sends a really, the message that it sends to our children is very unfortunate. I can't imagine my childhood without a library. It was so, so crucial, so important to my learning, expanding my interest and my future. And I want that for my kids. To me, a library is a necessity, it's not a luxury, it's a necessity. And I implore you to send a message to the families here, to our children, that this matters, that this is important to us. And thank you.
Thank you. Other comment in the room?
Is it only about the library?
No, anything.
patiently waiting, good morning. My name is Brian Poe, I'm from Lewiston. I provided the board, county CAO, and county council, a hard and digital copy of a presentation with all correspondence and communications regarding the proper application of California Business and Professional, Profession Code 16102, an 83-year-old code that was instituted at the end of World War I, excuse me, World War II, for the benefit of veterans coming home from the war. I moved to Trinity County in 2014 and I've been a resident close to 10 years now. I'm a disabled veteran who served in the Navy from 1976 to 1982 as an administrative specialist. I was honorably discharged in 1982 after serving six years. I've been operating an ice cream truck in Trinity County, going on six years, and the last two years in Chasta County, city of Reading, and I have permits for both locations. When I licensed my truck in Reading, I was informed that the California Business and Profession Code 16102 was a statewide law that provided for the selling of wares with the exception of alcohol, at no cost to the veteran for the permit process. I received exempt status for the county of Chasta, city of Reading, for a sound truck and ice cream truck mobile facility. At the start of the 2024 season, I inquired about getting this exemption here in Trinity County. It was informed that it wasn't applicable since the county doesn't issue business license and only permits. Then I reached out to Trent, the CAO, since he's former military, and he forwarded me a blank permit application, which showed the veteran's exemption and stated Code 16102 right on the application. This permit application was showing the code exemption only for events and not the occupation of the business and it's defined in Code 16102. The code doesn't specify a trimmed-down version of the code guidelines. The opinion enclosed with my proposal from the California Attorney General makes clear the purpose of the code of allowing the sales of items excluding alcohol, excuse me, and provide the veteran with the ability to perform the occupation at no cost whatsoever. I inquired with the Trinity County permitting authority whether the payment made for the permit for 2024 was a tax or a fee. I requested this by email, but I received no response back. In all fairness, I inquired in cities and counties outside of Trinity County, and each and every one I contacted informed me that they would provide the veteran's exemption under Code 16102. The only requirement would be environmental health inspection for that county and a newspaper publication for the fictitious business name filing. Other than that, all other costs would be given an exemption as they should under the guidelines of Code 16102. I think somewhere along the procedural way, there was a misunderstanding of the full application of this code in Trinity County. And I'm asking, I am making the Board of Supervisors aware of this so that corrective action can be taken and construction be given to the permitting authority to provide the full benefit of the exception to veterans.
Ryan, I'm sorry, there was a three-minute limit and you're past it.
Oh, can I, I have one line left.
One line.
Okay, I want to thank the board, CAO, and county council for providing me the time to make the county aware of this matter so the appropriate action can be taken.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment and for the information you provided.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment in the room?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Sam Brinkley from Lewiston. I think what we're seeing here is a direct result of the mismanagement led by Jill Cox against many of the people in this room. She has made it a personal effort to go after perceived political enemies. I mean, in her own writings and emails, she tried to cut down the music program for the children over a perceived slight of a hotel tax. And now is currently holding secret meetings to include tobacco in the cannabis. You're gonna regulate tobacco now, you're gonna make stores that sell tobacco be 1,000 feet from a school and put this more regulation on stores. I mean, let's just look at Gogan Store, for example. He's 350 feet from a school. I can get up in the morning and go buy my milk once a week because people show up every day to buy cigarettes. You go after the economic drivers of this county and then sit up there like the emperor has no clothes, when we don't have money for a law library. I mean, it's just completely ridiculous, Jill, to sit up there and pretend like this is not your doings. This is your doings. You do what Paul Howser says, his wife is your treasurer, and he was the leading charge to sue this county. People that want to hurt the cannabis program, you invite them to the meetings on email. You secretly work behind closed doors to destroy an industry that was one of the biggest in the county.
Sam, just one thing is that the guidelines for this is to direct your input to the chair.
She is chair, right?
No, me this year.
All right, well, that was what Jill's doing too, right? I mean, the first rule she passed was that you could be co-chair in your first year. That was a very opening rule, right, Jill? But I'll direct it to you, Rick. I think it's ridiculous. I think that y'all have mismanaged this county's funds to no end and it's criminal. That's really all I have to say. I think I'm saying what everybody knows already.
Thank you, sir. Other comments in the room? Yes? Okay. And we do have 43 people online, we'll see how many of them want to come.
Good morning, my name is Brooke Millerick, I'm a resident here in Leaverville. I am being self-pushed to activism here on my am being self-pushed to activism here on my, within the people that I know to do all that I feel physically possible here as, as a voter and a resident to and I am very, very interested in a long-term solution specifically for our libraries. And I use that as a plural. I believe that the three libraries that we have in the county are crucial to, to our community. I believe that by having them, that they help boost up property values here in the county. And that by, and that we need a long-term solution. Whether that be through a tax, through a specific tax, because I recognize that Trinity County sees the word tax and they vote no most of the time. However, it might not be the easiest, but the simplest way to increase revenue here in this county is through a tax. And I believe that with the proper amount needed, not too much, not, not nothing, but not too much, that our county can, can continue, can keep this open for a long term so that we don't have to do this every year. And that's so, I also believe that it is important that we provide a I, I find it important that we do not just slash the budget more, that we don't, it is not my want or wish that we fire more people just to keep something open. I, I really think that we're already strapped as a county as it is. And that people, a lot of people are struggling with what they have. That being said, if it costs a fancy drink a month, not that I'm saying it, if it costs a fancy drink a month over the years' time to keep our library open, I think that's a willing and worthy thing to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Others in the room? Okay, we'll go online.
Heather Gosman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Heather Gosman and I am from Hayfork. And I'd like to speak to the library as well and just express how important it is for our communities, the libraries here in Trinity County. And I'm positive that I speak for so many community members here in Hayfork. I have a fourteen-year-old daughter and I have a six-year-old daughter and I've been going to the library here in Hayfork for fourteen years. And I want to give a huge shout out to Nancy. She's amazing and she's become my friend over the years. And I really value her and the library as a place to take my children, to meet with other parents. And there are others, the community members who use the library because it's a resource for them, whether it's to use the computer or to use the copy machine, check out books, engage with other people, engage with Nancy. It's just so valuable. And I'd like to just ask everyone in the room and on the board to just go back and remember that feeling you got as a child and over the years of when you walked into the library. There is always a peace, there is a reverence, and it just is a whole different world. And I think that we need to hold that as so precious for our children and for the future of our county, which is an amazing county. So much potential and possibility with these young people who are going to be running it someday. So I think that we need to do everything possible to keep all of our libraries open. And I thank you so much for your time. I know it's a hard job, but please go back to those feelings you felt when you were in the library and how special they are and just use that in making your decision. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
Naomi.
Thank you. Good morning. Cheryl Wiler and Board. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Naomi Goulette. I live in Weaverville in District One. I have a five-year-old and an almost three-year-old. Now, when I was around eight years old, I was actually part of the book brigade that moved the old library books from their old Main Street location to the current building. And I obviously still remember that today. And what an amazing feeling it was to be a part of that. So I ask today that you continue to work on creative solutions to keep the Trinity County Library System open to the public. There are so few spaces that families can utilize in poor weather here in this county, whether that's our smoky summers or our rainy and snowy winters. I would echo what Jen Hill stated about this being a desirable resource to attract families to our county. If I were looking to move to Trinity County, I would question the health of the community that could not keep a public library system open. My son's preschool teacher at his graduation described my son as knowing something about everything and having a brain full of facts that he is always ready to share. And the richness of his knowledge is truly a direct result of our library and the rich resource of information that's available in its walls to all county citizens. If the library closes, you will certainly hear me grumble about having to buy books for my children instead of accessing free books at the library that I also don't have to store on my limited and small bookshelves. But I want to point out that it's my privilege that I have the luxury to spend money on books. Many families would be losing what I truly believe is a necessary public resource for the early education of all Trinity County children. The library obviously has many benefits, public benefits beyond those that have been stated by me and others here even. I'm concerned that if the library is closed, it will be even more difficult to reopen them. So even if it is looking at a temporary solution for right now as a stopgap, please direct C A O Tuttle to continue to work with the friends of the library and other interested citizens in exploring creative solutions to the funding issues. Whether that's a ballot measure or a tax, as Brooke had stated earlier, whether that's making private donations more accessible to fund expenses and salaries, or even if that looks like the library being managed by an entity other than the county. Thank you for your time and thank you for your hard work to keep our libraries open.
Thank you for your comment.
Catherine.
Catherine Sidman, Lewiston. This is a heavy meeting. It's tragically sad that we find ourselves in the position where we've mismanaged the county to the point where we're shutting the library. It's heartbreaking. I took my kids to school at the high school today. And when we drove by the library and we saw that cute little sign that somebody put up, my son said, it's gonna be really sad that I'm not gonna have a place to go hang out after school and just get a little bit of quiet time, use the bathroom, drink from a drinking fountain, and get to sit for a quiet moment. I would encourage the board to double down on the things that we know generate revenue for the county. Unfortunately, this board is very, very glad to shut down revenue generators like cannabis. And this is what we get. We get a drug den on Rush Creek that the sheriff's office is not interested in dealing with, that lit on fire twice in the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We it, we are wasting a ton of time writing a tobacco ordinance, which I understand it's a huge embarrassment that in Weaverville, there were illegal drugs being sold at retail right under everyone's nose. Of course, that's an embarrassment. But the response to that isn't regulating every mini mart in this county out of business. When Liam Gogan retires, which one day I hope he does, and I hope it's a fishing-hunting extravaganza and he loves it, he'll need to sell that business to someone else who won't be able to get a license to sell tobacco because they're too close to a school. You don't mind that they're selling alcohol because that's great. Let's have more alcohol in the historic district and on Main Street and on every street corner. But heaven forbid, people are allowed to buy cigarettes there. And so probably that store won't be a store anymore. It won't be a gas station anymore. It won't be anything. If you take away the ability for people to be in business selling tobacco, which I'm not a friend of at all, if you take that away, I won't be able to buy milk in Lewiston. There are people in Lewiston who only grocery shop in Lewiston. And you're jeopardizing the two businesses that have legs here. Because that's all you can think to do with your time. I encourage everyone listening to this to Google Trinity County Tobacco Ordinance. And you can see the good, hard work that the board has been doing, which will not generate revenue, have an adverse impact on staff that already can't manage what they're supposed to be managing, and now they're gonna manage tobacco, this whole made-up thing. And in the meantime, let's close the library. Not great, guys, not great. Let's double down. Let's get some revenue coming. This is an abundant world. This is an abundant county full of beautiful, bright people. There's enough for all of us. Let's embrace that instead of all this negative Nellie BS.
Thank you for your comment.
Terry. Terry.
I guess we'll move on.
Gwen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Gwen Ryder. I'm from Junction City. And I'm very dismayed that the library is supposedly closing. I would like to speak on behalf of a lot of parents in the community, especially parents of young children. It's extremely isolating here. It really is in Trinity County. In a lot of other communities, they have a lot more resources for parents and community places where parents can go with their young children and can gather. And this is one of the only ones that we have here in Weaverville and in the general community. And it really helps make parenting less isolating. And not only is the library a resource for parents, but it's a resource for, I mean, I remember being a teenager and coming to the library and writing and printing my resumes to get a job. And on a very personal note, when I was about twelve years old, my father was homeless for a few years. And the only way that he was able to communicate with me was through emails that he would send out the public library. So it's not only a resource for books, it's a resource for internet access and printing and just public gathering. And it makes the community less isolating and it gives people opportunities. It gives a homeless father opportunities to communicate with his daughters. It gives his daughters communicate, yeah, opportunities to hear from him when we otherwise wouldn't have heard a word from him in years. It was all because of the library. So it's not, it's a very multifaceted issue and it's, it provides so much for so many people and we just have to come up with a solution. Closing the library is not going to make us who are in support of it just back down. You're still going to be hearing from us at every moment that we can raise our voices because we are not going to stand for the library being closed. So we have to come up with a solution. And this isn't an acceptable thing to be doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others?
Terry. You're muted.
Any others?
We can't hear you, Terry.
Oh, he was the last one. And were there any others in the room before we close public comment? Okay, I do want to acknowledge the board has probably as individuals and as collective have received a number of emails from people regarding the library and other matters of the animal shelter as well. And one of the things that I'm doing in this meeting is to establish an ad hoc committee that is focused on looking at funding sources for library, animal shelter, basically any of the county services that are potentially at risk due to funding limitations. And I just want to acknowledge that Supervisor Cox has been working on this for some time and has found some potential solutions. And what we decided is that coming into this timeframe before the budget hearings next month, that we would set up this ad hoc to be able to work with staff members and, and try to bring forward potential solutions. I think as some of the commentary that we heard, there are some people who say, go ahead, I'll give up my, my expensive drink. And then there are others who say, I will never even approve a tax that somebody pays from outside the county through T O T. So there is not an easy path forward, but we do want to look at those options. And so that work has already been underway and that work will continue. And perhaps you can, if you want to, you can provide more of that feedback during your update about the work you've been doing. And yeah, I think that's it. So that'll be a new ad hoc committee that will consist of myself and Supervisor Cox. And we will bring forward with our work with the staff and some other counties that have taken some similar actions and bring that to the board and to the public when we are in a position to do that. So thank you for your, your input. Do we have?
He's on a phone. So if we could put him on speaker, he asked if he could still make his comment.
He's on a phone to put him on speaker. So can, has he phoned into the Zoom or? Oh.
Still make his comment via her phone into the.
Sure.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, Terry Mines, Junction City. Unfortunately, I can't unused the Zoom, so I have to do it this way, but let's get serious, people. You've got two very serious things on the block here. You can't close the library and you have to fund the animal shelter. What you're gonna do is you're gonna make a couple tough decisions here and we're gonna go to the state and you're gonna hand them the cannabis program. You're gonna shut down the cannabis program in Trinity County because unfortunately it's very corrupt. So you're gonna shut that down. The money that will be saved from that, you can sell that building and that will also generate money. You can put some books in the library that say how to run a business for cannabis, some others how to grow cannabis, and shift our equity funds that are being stolen from us and ship them over there to save the library. Okay? On top of that, our county council has gotten us into I don't know how many lawsuits. And that has destroyed our county and the businesses here. We need to change county council, hire an internal one and cut that bill down. I think everyone in the county needs to know how much money Margaret Long's law firm has been paid in the last four years because it's an exorbitant amount of money. And it's all because she creates a position to where the county gets sued and it costs the county fifteen dollars to keep funding these lawsuits that are created by our county council. So if you're gonna take this seriously, you make those decisions and you cut the Department of Cannabis out and you, and you make a change of county council. If you guys can't handle that responsibility, put in your resignations now. Let's get the governor to appoint some people that can come in here and clean this mess up. And quit blaming Trent Tuttle for anything. He didn't start this. He didn't, he didn't make this mess. The supervisors did. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your help with that. Okay, we will now move into reports and announcements. We'll start with reports from department heads.
I have no reason.
Okay. All right, and report from our C A O.
I got a couple items to report on. The first one is under the California Clean Energy Planning Program grant, Trinity County Community Development Department was awarded $100,000 for a feasibility study for electricity options in the Post Mountain area. And R F P will go out in the near future to select the company who will conduct that study. The county as the official grant applicant and T C O E, Trinity County Office of Education, as the the really lead and the individuals who put the whole entire grant application together was awarded a $1.2 million Mental Health Student Services Act grant. T C O E will get the funds through behavioral health to potentially conduct items like provide social, emotional learning for teachers and students, potential clinician staff and counseling services for staff, mental health and wellness. Overall, this is a big win for T C O E and behavioral health. And I think both organizations for the partnership in putting together that grant application. On the topic of budget, as we've heard today, there are numerous proposed county budget topics of interest the public is aware of in some form or fashion. Just so we're all aware of the timelines with the proposed budget, the proposed budget book will be published no later than September 6th. The budget hearings are scheduled to start September 24th and will run consecutive days until we are done. The final adopted budget must be approved by the board no later than October 2nd. And then my last item for today or for this portion of the meeting is on the general plan. The draft public document was published on last Friday. The draft public document was published on last Friday, August 16th. Info can be found on trinity2050.com. The information has been uh, sent out via e-blast. It's on our county website. Uh, it's been published in, in numerous forums. The official public comment period will run for 60 days. As a reminder, there is a community meeting in Hayfork at the fairgrounds on August 22nd. And then there is a general plan meeting uh, here in Weaverville on the 22nd at the Veterans Hall and both those meetings start at 5:30 and end at 7:00. And then there's also a joint Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission meeting on August 22nd starting at 9:00 where there will be a workshop uh, to familiarize the board and commission with the draft document, provide an overall general plan update and then what to expect next uh, as the general plan process continues. And that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. All right, from uh, supervisors, Supervisor Fraser.
Excuse me. Trent, did you say the 22nd for Hayfork? I think it's the 21st.
21st for Hayfork, 22nd for Weaverville.
He did say the 22nd.
And Supervisor Fraser?
Um, I had no out of county travel and nothing to report. I will have a meeting tomorrow, but not much going on the last couple weeks.
Okay, Supervisor Cox.
I also had no out of county travel. The fire chiefs meeting was canceled due to the demand of current fires on our chiefs and related personnel, so that will wait a month. Um, I do want to acknowledge the Humboldt Area Foundation, Wild Rivers Communities Foundation for the $6,000 they provided to replace the transmitter that sits atop Oregon Mountain and beams um, North State Public Radio into the Weaverville Basin. This was a critical time for the transmitter to be out of service as that radio station does provide vital information during fire emergencies. And so it was not a comfortable thing to have that out of commission. Want to acknowledge Ally Angney and her team um, who uh, received our uh, the proposal that came from the Weaverville Transmission Corporation requesting that funding and they were able to find money in their disaster resilience funding even after so much uh, need in Humboldt County due to the fires that they have experienced. So grateful for that and um, there will be conversations between the Transmission Corporation and North State Public Radio regarding um, ongoing donations that probably many folks from the county make to that radio station to see if some funds can be directed toward the potential replenishing of those funds. And then diverted back to them. Uh, PSA 2 Area Agency on Aging meeting was yesterday. There are free caregiver support events for those who are providing care to Alzheimer's and dementia patients. And as someone who knows that journey personally, those um, types of support systems are really important. And so if that's you trying to navigate or someone that you know a path such as that at this time, please reach out to learn how you can tap into those services. Um, a similar situation is if yourself or someone you know is needing assistance navigating medical uh, medical channels. That can be tricky and there is help to help you with that. Uh, and report.
Supervisor Gogan.
I have no out of county travel uh, or no meetings. I was on vacation the entire time between last board meeting and this board meeting.
Is that such a thing? Two weeks of vacation? Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Well, I haven't been on vacation. I hope you had a good time.
Had a great time.
Good, good. Um, so I uh, have uh, I've been given the opportunity next uh, year to serve on the Public Lands Steering Committee um, as a subcommittee vice chair for NACO. And I've also been reappointed um, as the role Action Caucus Representative for NACO as well. I really enjoy that opportunity and it really allows us to have a voice in the room when we're talking about um, the PILT funding and SRS and other major decisions that come down through the farm bill that affect all rural counties across the nation. I attended a NACO meeting on uh, an update on the farm bill and uh, Congress still is going back and forth on that. And when I speak of, of the farm bill, it's important to recognize that so much of the funding that we receive through commodities and disasters, funding for conservation, nutrition, um, rural development and research in our extension services, funding that goes to our state forestry or in our national forestry rather, and our energy projects and our crop insurances. And then additional funding for beginning farmers all comes through uh, the farm bill. So when we say farm bill, that doesn't just mean farm impacts. It means there's a significant impact to all rural communities. So hoping that they will um, get that passed and funded will be very helpful as our payment in lieu of taxes is held up in that decision as is our SRS funding. So that was a good meeting for, for me to attend just to keep up to date on all of that. I also attended um, the in the NCRP meeting uh, through the committee that's looking at cleaning up um, negative impacts from illegal marijuana grows and how counties can help deal with some of the abandoned um, old grow sites and abandoned properties from that. That was also very informative. We'll be bringing forward the um, the information for, from that meeting at the next NCRP meeting that will be held in Elk Valley in Del Norte at the Elk Valley Casino in Del Norte on October 18th from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, which I believe uh, Supervisor Gogan and I will both be attending that. Um, outside of that, just as the rest of you have been fielding um, letters and concerns around our library and our animal shelter. And I am looking forward to um, working with all of the folks in our community and with maybe giving information into the ad hoc about ways that we can hopefully uh, solve this for an end result of promise. It's important and I'm, I'm glad that we are all open minded and looking for alternative ways to move forward because what got us here isn't gonna get us there. We were here last year in the same spot. And so looking for new ways to solve for this is gonna be a really valuable um, and worth a tremendous amount of effort from all of us. So thank you everyone for your active citizenry. It really makes a difference.
Okay, I had uh, out of county travel just down to Reading for the SCED or Economic Development Board meeting where I led another round of strategic planning discussions. Uh, we're getting close to wrapping that up, which will be great. On the California jobs first standpoint, I uh, mentioned before, I'm now part of the advisory committee, so I am being assigned as are others, projects to review based on the criteria that was established by the committee. So all these projects that were submitted around this North State area are now getting into the hands of people that are evaluating them based on the criteria that we established. And so in the next month or two, we should have decisions. I know of at least five projects that were submitted for Lewiston, I mean, um, Trinity County. And um, I of course won't be reviewing any of those from a conflict of interest standpoint, but I'm hopeful that uh, uh, that we will get some funding out of that in part because by design, the program wants to get um, funding into underrepresented communities which we fall into. Uh, NORTEC, which is the Economic Development Group, I met uh, with staff virtually uh, to prepare for a board meeting that's taking place later this week. Unfortunately, it is in conflict with our joint session with the Planning Commission. I was supposed to facilitate a session with that board, but it looks like I will be um, here and trying to maybe sneak in a little bit of time to help get that part through. Um, basically, we're going to be presenting a board effectiveness uh, survey results and, and follow-up plans to that board. And just so you understand, this is a 40-person board. So it's a, it's a really interesting group to work with and, and the survey generates some great things for us to dig into. Uh, also mentioned last time, but it's underway now, there is a, a board chair effectiveness survey that's actually in the works right now here in Trinity County. So um, some key contacts within the county, uh, department head, C A O, supervisors, all being asked to provide feedback about how uh, the person in this position is carrying out their role as chair. So I look forward to getting that feedback and working to be better. Funding sources, uh, as mentioned, uh, during the public comment, Supervisor Cox and I are working with C A O Tuttle to research various options for addition rating, generating additional funding needed. Uh, and as I briefly mentioned, this is something that Supervisor Cox has been already digging into uh, knowing things were coming. And so now we're just sort of doubling down, trying to bring as much forward as we can prior to the budget hearings. Um, but as Supervisor, or as uh, C A O Tuttle mentioned, uh, that time is very short. So we'll, we will dig in, bring what we can bring forward. And uh, as a ad hoc committee, it'll be on the agenda now for updates about what we find. Uh, river restoration, we um, we have arranged for uh, some interested parties to participate in a visit to the River Restoration Project Sites. So much like we were having uh, the Bureau representative here to talk about the river water management. And this is now digging in a little bit to, to more go look at the actual restoration sites that have taken place and what the effect has been as well as planned sites. So that the board can be fully informed about those matters when decisions come before us. And uh, from community meetings, I just wanted to mention that we'll be, I, I will be scheduling community meetings to discuss the budget and other matters of interest here in the next few weeks. Because obviously, as you were hearing today with the library, there's a lot of public input and, and concern. And so just want to do that outreach to have those community meetings. And uh, so I'll be doing one, one up in the North Lake area, one in Lewiston, and then Supervisor Cox uh, agreed to do one jointly with me since I have a small piece of Weaverville and she has the bulk of it. So we'll schedule those here soon and, and give people a chance, not just have three minutes, but have a dialogue. And so we look forward to having those opportunities to discuss. And that's all I have. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna uh, let everyone know, I unfortunately am not able to be at the meeting on Thursday. My best friend of 30 years is getting married in Sacramento. So I, I regret that there's a conflict of timelines there, but.
You'll just have a lot of homework to do afterwards.
I will, I will.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. So uh, let us have a public comment regarding the consent calendar.
I have no race.
Okay, uh, did uh, any supervisors have an item they wanted to pull from the consent calendar for discussion and deliberation? No, then I will entertain a motion.
A move to approve is presented. I will second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? No? All right.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Aye. And just uh, for the benefit of people who are sitting on the meetings and, and don't really understand the consent calendar, uh, we make that decision sometimes like this extremely quickly, but there was a lot of work that went into that in the background by the staff preparing all of these. So m- many thanks to the staff for making all those things happen. County matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Did um, I guess we'll have um, anybody have something they want to pull for out of order? Okay. Then we will move to item one under our Auditor Controller. Approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2324 for Courts General, Department 1500, increasing services and supplies by $20,388 and approve a budget, budget adjustment for fiscal year 2324 for General Fund Contingency, Department 90, 9901, decreasing provisions for contingency by $20,388. And uh, but fiscal impact is an increase in general fund appropriations in the amount of $20,388. And the current contingency balance is $139,644.
Good morning. Good morning, board.
Morning.
Um, Christine Gaffney, Auditor Controller. I am just here to see if you have any questions on the agenda item for you.
Any questions from supervisors? No, I didn't either. Thank you for all the preparation. So we didn't have to ask a lot of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
Public comment.
All right, yes, public comment. Thank you Supervisor Fraser. Um, none in the room?
I have no race.
Okay, no.
A move to approve is presented.
I will second.
Any discussion? No.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler?
Aye. Thank you, Christine. All right, item two, community development, environmental health. Adopt a resolution for local enforcement of retail tobacco facilities. A potential revenue of $626,535 from the tobacco enforcement grant over a 36-month grant period.
Good morning, Chair, um, Board of Supervisors. Kristi Anderson, Trinity County Environmental Health Director. Um, I wanted to uh, bring this before you to attempt to utilize some of the enforcement funding that's gathered for our county um, through the taxes collected on each cell of tobacco in California. I do want to clarify that um, we, on, based on some of the public comment that um, we attempted to see if a, a state, a generic state ordinance um, would be of interest to stakeholders and um, seeing the feedback there, we did not move forward in that direction. And I, to bring to you guys to see if you wanted to go that way, I just didn't want to waste anybody's time. Um, so that's from some of the feedback earlier. I just wanted to say that. Um, this would just be enforcing existing state laws and um, it's my understanding that wherever A B C does not inspect, um, those locations are not being uh, inspected. And so um, the standalone smoke shops and things like that are of concern as well as some of the places that aren't looked into as well. Um, does anybody have any questions for me?
Yeah, so we, I own, I own a liquor store and a gas station and a alcohol store. And we get checked fairly regularly. I think three times a year we get checked um, by A B C for alcohol and tobacco. They send a decoy in um, and hopefully we pass, which we have every year for the last 26 years. Is this something to do with that? Is it gonna be more oversight on that?
As far as A B C goes?
Yeah.
Uh, no. Um, so this is just strictly tobacco products.
Just tobacco?
Yes.
All right. Good.
Any other questions for Christine?
I just, in reading this, it's, it's all coming down from the state. We're just, we're following suit with what's necessary in order for us to have access to some of those taxes that are already um, being accessed through these sales.
That's correct. Um, we are um, the only county in our area, but 104 different counties and cities have uh, tobacco ordinances which allow the nexus for them to utilize those funds. We do not. And so um, instead of asking for new regulations or abundance, I, I'm just asking for allowance to enforce current state regulations so we can utilize those funds.
What, what would those funds, what are, what are the allocation opportunities with those funds?
Uh, for tobacco, enforcement of tobacco laws.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And I don't know if you're aware, obviously, I had a number of questions for you behind the scenes just to prepare. Uh, were you able to get any more information about the fines and fees and where those go?
No, but um, before we can accept the fees, I will have to come back for an M O U agreement. And at that time, um, I was told that the Public Health Law Center does not have an attorney until today to review that.
Okay.
So I asked for, I asked that question specifically. Um, but when we come back, if, if you allow, um, when we come back, I can bring forth that M O U with that information. And so we can decide on how we may need to change things a little bit if necessary.
And from the benefit of the board, uh, the question was along the lines of, well, are there fines, which I assume? Which I assume there are, and was able to confirm that there are, associated with not following the rules and regulations. Then do those go back to the state? Did they come to the county, things like that? So that's what we're still digging into. And then I did want to clarify, especially as people are so focused on money right now, as we look towards the budget hearing, this has potential revenue of the $626,000. And just want to clarify, it's revenue matched by expense. So it's not net new income. It is, this is how much grant money we can get our hands on, that we would then spend on specific grant-related activities. And, and as I understand it, Christie, it's not just the specific things outlined here that would be allocated to that $626,000, but other COOPA-related activities that all are supported by that grant?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay.
It's just the tobacco enforcement-related activities. I was just giving you a description of how the time will be spread with all the employees. So I'm sorry to clarify.
Okay.
It's just the enforcement of the tobacco laws and like creating a, a group task force and things like that.
Okay. So I'll just then echo some, some comments and concerns I raised. I think it's great for us to go after grant funding that can help us do what we need to do. And I think it's great to try to tackle this challenge that we've seen. My biggest concern is there have been times in the county where we access grant funds. We build our budget around having that, which means we might go hire more people, everything else. And then for whatever reasons, we're not able to charge all that time back to the grant, which means the general fund covers it. And we obviously can't afford that. So one of the things that struck me when I initially thought, and apparently that was correct, that all of this money is focused on specifically this tobacco kind of evaluation. The numbers don't add up to me, but I'll leave that to you and C O Tuttle to come up with. But I just want to make sure that we don't get a false sense of security saying, yes, we should go hire these people and because this money is here. Because when I did the math and said 25% of each of our three primary staff people of their time would be done to this, and yet we only have 32 sites to visit three times a year, those numbers don't add up to me. But, and, and I'm sorry, and this center, 626 is also for legal fees, attorney's fees, travel, all kinds of things. But it's the 25% of their staff time that I have a trouble doing the math to say, visiting these sites three times a year, which is 99 visits times, three times for 33, would add up to 25% of our staff's time. So just, I have no problem moving forward with this. I just want to make sure that when we go to make decisions about hiring, that it's very clear, the general fund will not be coming to the rescue of any funds that are required because we didn't use up the grant funds, but we had the expenses. So that's, I just want to make sure that that's on record for my standpoint. And that was part of the statement, I was based on a question, but I apologize for that. I should have waited until discussion. Did you now have a question?
Well, I don't have a question. I just would like to hear for the public's benefit, again, because we've been through this offline. There's grant funding available to allow us to do something that right now, without this resolution, we do not have the ability to do, and that is enforce state law. So state law is in place. We can't enforce it. If that is correct, could you speak to that?
Yes, that is correct. We currently don't have a nexus outside of law enforcement to, to enforce the state laws related to tobacco. I believe in the past, there were other agencies that took advantage of these tax funds, but they are no longer able to, due to some of the constraints of the grant. And tobacco does fall into the environmental health category of health and safety, and so that's the reason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For clarifying that.
Okay.
How many businesses failed their decoy check last year, the year before last?
So online, I know that Tricia is available, and she did have those numbers. I haven't had enough time to dedicate to that, but it was a general northern counties and the number of inspections and failures in the northern counties, and not specific to Trinity.
Okay. With that, we'll take public comment. Any in the room? Any online?
Tricia.
Good morning. Tricia Aberg, Community Services Director at the Human Response Network. As many of you know, Human Response Network subcontract with the Trinity County Department of Public Health to enact the Tobacco Education and Prevention Program. This does not allow us, unfortunately, to do enforcement of tobacco. So I just wanted to, one, clarify that. Also, to clarify some of the questions around what can be viewed by ABC. Is my understanding that that is alcohol and beverage control? And so the checks that they do are related to alcohol sales. The SINAR survey goes around the state and conducts inspections, the underage decoy operations of tobacco stores. We are grouped in with about a dozen other incredibly large counties out of ourselves and all of the other counties. They do a total of 34 underage decoy operations. So there is no data specific to Trinity County about whether or not they're following the regulations. I did want to state that we hope this helps better enforce the regulations equitably across all of the retailers. We know that there are many that follow the regulations very well, and there are some that unfortunately do not. And so this would allow for equitable enforcement of the regulations. It would not put any additional costs on the retailers. One of the key laws is the restriction of flavored tobacco sales. And that is very important to us because of the incredibly high rates of tobacco use of our youth. We have some of the highest youth vaping rates across the state, as many other rural areas do. So that's a very key, important part to us. I would be happy to answer any other questions. I know this is the public comment period, but I also am here just to support Christie because I helped her work on this as the Tobacco Education Program. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tricia. If you'll hold on, then since we're kind of treating this more like a co-presenter versus a general comment, I want to make sure if people have questions. Does anybody have anything based on what you just heard? I just wanted clarification. I, I thought I heard you say, this does not allow us to support the regulation of tobacco. You're saying something we did before doesn't, but this will, or I may have misheard.
So we, that's okay. My program, the Tobacco Education Program, that we have the subcontract through the Trinity County Public Health Department, that money comes from the California Department of Public Health. So I just wanted to clarify that that funding is for education, cessation, work with the youth, things like that. And so that nobody thought that there was kind of a duplicative program there, if anyone knew that we had that.
Thank you. That, that clarifies it for me and maybe for others. Okay. All right. We have no other questions, and we have no other public comment? We do have public comment, okay.
Catherine.
I would be really curious and maybe hope that somebody could find out if actual Trinity County retailers had, you know, violated the rules or gotten caught with the little undercover underage sting operations. You know, we, we, we talk a lot about how Trinity County is unique and different. And then when it's convenient, we just adopt whatever they're doing in the North State and conglomerate it data. And I would just love if we could have more granularity, because obviously, we should have enforcement. Flavored tobacco, gross. Keeping it away from kids, 100%. Anything that moves the needle on that, I fully support. But a broad crackdown on retailers that are already doing everything right, and we, if we haven't had infractions, and you know, I, I think that we could probably find out, probably get, somebody has that information somewhere, and it should be accessible to our government. So I would just hope that we would look at that and see whether or not underage sales are a big problem around here. And then if they are, yeah, get, get rid of those folks. But we don't need to over-regulate everybody because there's bad actors in other counties, if that makes sense.
Thank you for your comment, Catherine. Any other public comments?
I have no other raised hands.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I will move to approve as presented.
I will second.
For a discussion, if I could. So to respond to some public comment, Christie, if you would, what would it look like when these dollars come to make sure that our state laws are being enforced? Would it look like a crackdown? Would it look like over-regulation? What would it look like on the ground? If I were that retailer and you were approaching me?
So we already inspect most of the retailers on the food side. And so it would just be an inspection of the tobacco products to make sure there was no illegal sales there. We have found recently a lot of illegal products, but we were unable to do anything about that. For smoke shops that are not already regulated within our department, we would be doing the same type of inspection, making sure that no illegal sales were taking place.
And I guess most importantly, that clarified from some of what we were hearing in public comment was, it isn't coming up with new rules, new regulations, new requirements, new anything else. It's just more visits to make sure that the rules that are already in place are being adhered to. And if they're not, then we deal with it.
More so the ability to deal with it, correct? If you were visiting, looking at food, and you saw something that was going on with tobacco, you knew about it, but couldn't do anything about it. And again, this is state law, not adding to any, not adding to that.
Correct. And, yeah, we, we're seeing it there. So it's, it's not that it doesn't exist. And my hope always is to, you know, persuade the retailer away from selling those illegal products rather than add so a quote unquote crackdown, but really make sure that they're not allowing that usage. Because I, it's my understanding, Tricia with HRN, they do an educational program. The educational program doesn't have any kind of enforcement with it. And so that's why we're still seeing the same type of products on the shelves.
And if you, if you do find illegal products in your inspection, what's the next step? Do you, are you issuing citations, or are you trying to get voluntary compliance? What, what's the?
We always try to get voluntary compliance before we do any kind of a violation process because it's a lot more work on, on both ends. You know, we, we try to. However, depending on where the MOU goes with the fines and everything, we will have an NOV process if they were in violation multiple times, or they did not do it voluntarily. Yes.
So I guess I would just say, if someone had menthol cigarettes in their store, they've gone way out of their way to get those. If I wanted to get menthol cigarettes in my store, none of my distributors would take them into California. So I would have to go out of state, find someone else. I mean, I would almost think if you found menthol inside a smoke shop or a store like mine, they have really tried hard to break the law.
I will say that the places we've found illegal products, one of the locations admitted that they purchased it locally in Redding and Sacramento areas, but obviously not through the correct means.
So they didn't even buy it from a legal person in Redding or Sacramento because they're banned there also, correct?
Correct.
So they were really trying to go around the law?
Yeah. Also, Schedule I drugs found too.
I would make the, I would make the fine a little bit siffer, honestly. Because you've really tried to break the law, so that kind of haphazard thing. If you went around it menthol-wise or vape-wise, I think that you've made an effort to break the law.
And again, my understanding is we're focused on state laws and what they mandate.
Yep.
We're not trying to come up with new ways that would potentially change how that's handled.
Unless the support shows that we want to move forward in that direction. Correct.
So I, I'm sorry, I guess just to clarify then, is there, are you asking for staff direction about whether the board wants you to pursue something further than this, or are you just looking for approval of this?
No, I'm just looking for approval.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Chairman Luke Wyler.
Aye. Thank you for all your work, including answering all my questions. All right, item three, County Administrative Office, adopt a resolution establishing the required number of grand jury members in Trinity County at 11 members. Unknown fiscal impact.
Thank you, Chair. So this item is being requested by the, the courts to reduce the number of grand jury members from 19 to 11. The letter is attached to the, the agenda item as, as backup. If there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions?
Comment, I guess.
But if it's comments, let's save it for discussion.
Okay.
The only question I had, I didn't, and sorry if it was in there, was, do you have a ballpark of how much this is saving? I didn't even think it's not a big deal.
It's, it's really hard to tell because there's so many variable factors into where a grand jury member may, may live, how many meetings they're going to have, what type of travel that we would be required to pay. So I would, in general terms, anticipate that, yes, there would be some type of financial impact, some type of reduction in overall grand jury, jury cost, just because of, of the numbers. But it, I can't definitively say that because if of the 11 grand jury members, multiple of them were coming from farther distances, then we would potentially be paying more mileage. It just would kind of depend. But in general terms, in theory, yes, this would see a reduction in operating cost as well.
Almost in half. Yeah. And my understanding is from the background material is that basically a county, it's, you, a county has the authority to do this based on the size of the county and the population and so forth. And so our size allows us to have either 19 or 11, and so we're proposing to take advantage of the ability to have 11.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
And just to clarify, or have you reiterate, this action is in response to the fact that we, at our last board meeting, had to pull money out of contingency funds to cover the over-budget money that was needed. And so we are responding to that to try to stay within our means.
That, that's part of this, yes.
And the other part would be, it's difficult to find that many people to participate.
That's the main, that's, that's really the driving factor, is the, the difficulty we have to maintain or to establish a quorum with the number of 19. That, that's a very difficult task that some members of this board have experienced in trying to help appoint grand jury members, working with the judges and DA who oversee this program. But we, that's the main driver behind it. The, the secondary effect is we will see some, potentially, we will see a little bit of financial help here as well.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? We have at least one to public comment.
I, I was on the grand jury for three terms. My first term was 19 members. Somebody came up with the idea, we only needed 11 legally, so they dropped it down to 11 the second year. And we went back to 19 after that because 11 doesn't work. At 19 people, you can lose seven and still have a quorum. At 11, you lose four and you go home. And, and the other thing I don't understand is that each one of you have the right to appoint people to be determined if they, if they get appointed on the grand jury. Each school has the right to put somebody on the list to be looked at. I don't know if you guys have done that, but that's what you're supposed to do. And, and then the registrar voter is supposed to put in 100 people, so I don't. And then the registrar voter is supposed to put in a hundred people, so I don't quite understand. And the other thing I understand is that it's a jury. When I was brought in, I was appointed on the grand jury. And when I went to Redding to go to my training, they thanked us for volunteering, and I put my hand up. I didn't volunteer. I was appointed by the judge to be on the grand jury. And when she asked, "Did anybody else in the room not be, didn't volunteer?" Three-quarters of the people in the room put their hands up that they were appointed by the judge. They were not volunteer people. So I don't understand this, you know. You get nineteen people in the room, and you put them on the grand jury. You know, and the other thing is that we had, when I was on the grand jury, we had people from Southern Trinity that didn't ask to be paid to go to be there. So, you know, this thing about, you know, there's a lot of people who are willing to be on the grand jury and not take money. And the grand jury is too important of a job, and I wish people would realize that and actually be on the juries. Anyway, I recommend nineteen.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Any other public comments?
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Entertain a motion? Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Ladies first.
I'll move to approve because we need a motion for discussion.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion a second now. Discussion?
All right. So my questions come in regard to public comment, but seeing in the backup data that it was requested by the court systems to move from nineteen to eleven. And in, to answer some question the public may have, we have tried to submit names. But my understanding was that it was volunteer. And when those that I approached and put it out in email, and as broadly as I had the ability to do, I did not get response that people would want to do that. The responses that I did get of people who might be interested, but they would like more information about what that entailed, ended up learning what they wanted to know and saying, "No, thank you." And that it is difficult to fill those seats. So I would like more clarity about whether or not that can just be appointed, and also to distinguish between people being paid to participate and people having their mileage reimbursed, because mileage from Southern Trinity does get very expensive.
So first, the mileage reimbursement. That is what the appointed members are authorized? Whether they choose to accept that or not is a different story, but they are in fact authorized that. And this board saw what was submitted from the last grand jury. I cannot control that. Individuals will make that decision. Regarding the appointment versus voluntary, whomever is appointed is actually appointed by the judges. But that is not on an involuntary basis. We can't force somebody to go and participate on a non-voluntary basis on a grand jury.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I guess my input would be that all five of us are supposed to put three people forward from our district every year. That's what the supervisors do. And the way that I do it is, I don't want to just put out three names and they don't want to be on the jury. I ask them, so I know that my three people, they may not get in, but at least they want to do the job, which makes it a little bit easier. I think Jamie Green has to do it, the principal, a few other people, and the public. But it's hard. It's hard to get nineteen out there. It's difficult, has been difficult in the past to get nineteen people. So I think the job will be done well with eleven. I just, I know every year we struggle to get nineteen out there, and it's a tough chore. So, do I want to scale back? No. Do we need to? Yeah. It's just tough to get eleven people out there, and I understand what you're saying. But it's tough to get, to get nineteen people out of the county to do that.
Did you have something?
I have a question, maybe for council. Throw a curveball in here. I know one of the other boards that I'm on now, we just recently changed our makeup from an eighteen-member board to a nine-member board. In our bylaws and stuff, it still states that we can have up to. So is that something we could do with our grand jury to say, "We are going to establish an eleven-member board, but we can still have up to nineteen members, so you establish your quorum at seven rather than your quorum at a higher number." That way, it gives you even more wiggle room. Because I know we, even with appointed members on some of our, the boards I serve on, you have a hard time establishing a quorum because people don't show up. And so that would be something that I would be interested in, is let's lower the, let's lower our quorum number if we can, but at the same time, let's not limit the number of people we can put on the grand jury. If that's something we can do, possibly do.
I'm going to hedge this answer with, I haven't done extensive research on it, but the penal code is what governs this, and the penal codex does establish under what population sizes you can go up to nineteen or down. And I believe it specifically says that you can establish it at eleven. So the answer to that would be is, no, you can't establish it at a sliding scale based on how many people you get. The board needs to establish whether they're going to utilize the smaller number from a purpose of establishing a quorum. I don't think you can have that flexibility, but I can research it further if the board would like.
So Dan, were you getting at we could float between eleven and nineteen at times?
Or you could have a nineteen-member jury, but an eleven-member voting block or whatever, possibly make it a little easier to get a quorum. But if it's something that can't be done legally, then let's not try it.
But, I mean, county council is offering that she can do some more research, come back to us. Would you like to have her do that?
Yeah, that'd be good.
I mean, I suggest that we move forward as is, and know that we can always come back and change it if she comes back with research that says we can adjust. But for now, the court, who has to manage it, as you pointed out, has asked for this, and there's benefits and potential concerns associated, but we can always come back.
And I was able to look it up, pull up Penal Code eight-eight-eight-point-two, which is the one that governs the number of individuals. And Section B says that we are required to have eleven in counties with a population of twenty thousand or less upon approval of the Board of Supervisors. So I don't see the flexibility. I believe it's, we either are nineteen, or for a population of less than twenty thousand, we have the option of going to eleven, and populations exceeding forty thousand must have twenty-three.
Yeah. From my perspective, the courts know what they see every day and what they can deal with, so.
I do know that in the four tries of finding people, I never sent a name to the judge because I never had anybody that actually said, "Yeah, I want to be on the grand jury." So that's the difficulty.
Okay. Well, any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll call the vote.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye. Item four, County Administrative Office, introduce and waive the reading of Inordinance, amending code sections two-point-six-zero-point-five-three-zero regarding holiday leave and two-point-six-zero-point-seven-seven-zero regarding travel reimbursement. Fiscal impact up to thirty-one dollars per day per eligible employee or grand jury member.
Thank you, Chair. So this one falls under the category of cleaning up some code for the last number of years since two thousand seventeen. All of our MOUs with the five bargaining units have reflected how we've been operating, which is in contradiction to code. We are just cleaning this up as far as the per diem, and then the actual holidays that are listed. There was, Christmas Eve was the one that was specifically listed. That is in our standard holiday list that we, that we offer employees every year. However, county code is written a little different than the MOUs are right now. So this is simply cleaning up code to reflect what's in our MOUs.
Hey, any questions? All right. Public comment on this matter?
I have no raised hands.
And we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I will second.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye. All right. That, I need to provide a report out on our last closed session. Item G-point-one, Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-F, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Counties Designated Representatives, Leila Casis, Susie Hawkins, Margaret Long, Employee Organizations General Unit. And for that closed session, direction was given to staff. Today's closed session has one item, F-one, Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-F, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Counties Designated Representatives, Leila Casis, Susie Hawkins, Margaret Long, Employee Organizations General Unit. With that, I will ask if there's any public comment about closed session?
I have no raised hands.
All right. With that, we will turn the open session, move into closed session. Thank you.